Okay, Stanley City Council meeting will come to order Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P. M. I'd ask everybody to please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, with that, has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? If so, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. George? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, motion carries. Planning and zoning recommendations.
Mister Mayor, council members, we had our regular meeting last evening. Our first order of business was for a mobile food permit. For Miss Heinley from Mex Mix. She's had a mobile food permit at the Sunshine Car Wash for quite some time. And uh, it needs to be renewed and this time she'd like to move it up to Main Street where her building is where she's gonna have her new restaurant till the restaurant's done. And uh, so she applied for that location because it's a a new location on the permit, we told her she had to go through the public hearing process. So we set a public hearing for our next meeting for her.
Hey, uh, you need a motion then?
No, no, I just, that's information only for.
All right.
Then I'm gonna skip the mailbox and I'm gonna go down to the conditional use permit for Carol Mauer Ragamuffin Ranch daycare. This is a, they put in an application to build their daycare in the lot directly to the east of the Dollar General. And that is zone commercial highway. And because of that, a daycare is not a automatic approval. To put that daycare in there, they have to go through the conditional use permit. So we did a public hearing for next meeting for them also.
Okay.
Then we'll back up to this mailbox ordinance. Uh, after you had asked to go back and to uh, revisit it with some, some changes and some stuff, uh, everybody received in their email the uh, the same thing we received from the attorney's office uh, with suggestions, a lot of red. Lot of it comes down to the, to the uh, so the first, the first four pages are the ordinance as we presented it. And in the ord- and the proposed ordinance, the red lines um, are the places we had questions about. And then in the next pages, is this included in their packet for tonight, uh, Lynn?
Todd, it should be.
What's that Amanda?
It should be, they should have got it in their planning and zoning packet on Friday. But I don't know.
Their P and Z packet?
Yes, but I don't know if they have physical copies.
It's, okay, it's not included in their city council packet. Okay, so hopefully everybody read this in their email. The second set of pages is um, does the council need to see copies or?
I don't think we need copies, I don't.
Um, so the next, the next set of pages is the comments received back from the attorney. So what it kind of boils down to in a nutshell is, is that the city owns the boulevard. The city has control of the boulevard, what the homeowner does in the boulevard, and what takes place in that area and who's gonna maintain it, who's gonna? But when an individual approaches the U. S. Postal Service, the postal service has say over the city. So if, if you come and ask for a mailbox and the city writes an ordinance that says you can't, you can't, you can't, you must, you must, you must. And the postal service disagrees with the city, the post office wins hands down. And if the city were to balk at their, at the post office and say, no, we, this is our property, we're gonna override you. And that homeowner doesn't get their mail delivered to that box, they have the right to sue the city to get that box where they want it. I guess that to kind of, the ordinance has a lot of good words in it, a lot of good advice and a lot of good um, what should happen.
But no teeth.
But no teeth from the city standpoint. I mean, as far as, as we can, we can leave this ordinance as written. You guys could pass the first reading of it tonight if you wanted and leave it as is, but beware that if this does happen, the post office can override you.
Yeah, the only, the only issue that I have with the whole thing, Todd, is the other homeowner.
Correct.
There's two homeowners involved and it's across the street. Should he not have?
Correct, and if, if we put that permit in, in order, in, into this ordinance, if we have that consent permit included and the guy across the street argues and says, no, but the post office says, you're putting it right there on his property, whether he likes it or not, the post office will win.
They'll win, but uh, the only thing I was, I would just want to encourage whoever was putting that postal box up to get with that neighbor and choose a spot that's not gonna irritate that neighbor, you know what I mean?
Can I make a comment? So, um, and I, I was talking to Todd about this after the last meeting and I think the best thing to do is to have a, a permit that's allowed. But to, the city's the one that decides and then they can contact the owner that's gonna be the landlord and say, look, we're gonna put it on your side, we're gonna put it somewhere. But you tell us where you would like us to put it and then we'll decide if that's the best place, cuz he was, Todd was talking about, you know, we don't wanna have all these mailboxes s- separated too far apart cuz then you got no place to park, so if you can put them on the corners of each lo- lot, landowner, you can maybe put four there and take care of all of that. But then you give the landowner some, some say into it that you're gonna have, so I think that's a, a perfect example with Todd. Todd, that's, I think you should have a permit, but putting that you need the landowners permission creates a whole problem for the city. Because then it's like, well, I can't get my mail because you tell me I need to permit from, permission from the landowner and they're not giving it to me, so I can't get my mail or I gotta go down to the next lot and then all of a sudden they're not doing it, all of a sudden I'm on the way, end of the, you know, three blocks down, so you're setting yourself up some problems, but if you, if you give the landowner some say, that protects the city a little bit.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is instead of the, the guy putting up the box, just walking across the street and picking a spot and planting a mailbox, that to me is totally wrong. He, he should have to get with, or the city should have to get with that landowner and pick the best spot, yes, it's gonna go there. You know, but he should have that option like, and like Ryan said, if it was right next to a lot line, perfect, you know?
But I disagree with that because take me for instance, where my neighbor's mailbox is, I lose a whole parking spot in front of my house now because of it.
Yeah, uh, there's gonna be.
When they, when it's on their, when that road is on their side of the street, they could put their mailbox in the middle of their own lot and give up the parking spot. It doesn't, that should not affect the neighbor.
But if the postal department says it can't be on that side.
That does not say anything about where, if it's on that side. All it says is that it has to be six feet from a driveway.
I, I think what, what Chad is saying is, and with what Ryan, if you take Chad and Ryan's comments and put them together, it makes a lot of sense in this case because by placing it on the left-hand side of the driveway, it interfered with the neighbor's rights. If it would have been put on the right-hand side of the driveway, it would have interfered with the mailbox owner's rights. And I, I, so I agree with what Ryan has just said that somebody needs to give an opinion of where that mailbox should go. And as in this case, if there would have been a, a, a permit asking to put this box there, the post office says, yes, you may put it on the east side of the street in front of your house, but it has to be on the east side. Fine, but then somebody should have said, it should go on the right-hand side of your side or your driveway and interfere with your own parking, not interfere with the neighbor's parking. So I, I do agree with that. Um, I think that that paragraph that talks about the consent forms and the, the uh, getting the neighbor's consent, I think we need to sit down and rewrite that paragraph. And uh, the, the other issue on this is we need to change the date, we're, we're never gonna be ready by October first with this. So do we, and it's, has to be in compliance by October first. We were thinking maybe we should change that date to maybe say June first of next year, that they'd have, because we'd like to leave the, no, no grandfather clause. No mailbox is safe. If they're not in the right spot, they gotta go, they gotta be moved. And we, so we'd like to keep that and then we'd like to do the compliance by, say, June first if everybody's happy with that.
I don't see a problem with.
And then rewrite that paragraph on the the adjoining neighbor property, whoever's next to that boulevard would have to sign a consent that we could turn that to, it would have to be inspected and decided which side of the mail, or the driveway to put the mailbox.
Todd, I got, I got a question. You talked about if somebody wasn't happy or whatever it is, put the mailbox here, what, they could, what, go after the city and sue the city?
If, if the city, if the post office told you, you have the right to have a mailbox in front of your house.
The city, okay.
You, you personally, if you personally wanna put your mailbox in front of your house and the post office says, go ahead Randy, put your mailbox in front of your house, you have the right to put it there. But when you put it on the boulevard, the boulevard belongs to the city. And the city has a right to tell you where to put that. Um, kinda sort of. But if the city tells you, no, you can't put it here, period. But the post office told you, the post office will override what the city says.
Is that controlled by the federal government?
It's, it's because the, you know, U. S. Post Office is part of the federal government.
Well, why do we wanna mess with the federal government? What, what's the advantage of it? It's not like it's gonna happen.
I don't think we are wanting to mess with the federal government, we're just trying to control uh.
But they control you. Because whatever they decide to do, they're gonna do it.
Exactly, but if it's within reason, they're not even gonna get involved. I mean, and that's all we're asking for is people to be reasonable.
There are some po- some post office boxes that are placed in the middle of the block. And then they went out and put no parking signs on them. Which no parking sign has any, any legality weight whatsoever because a private citizen can't put up a sign and say, no parking. But what they did is they put their mailboxes in the middle of the block and then there's a business, two businesses across the street and there's a lot of park, you know, vehicles parking and this screws up all the parking for that whole block. And my theory is, is that they should be more towards the driveway of the mailbox recipient eh, rather than out in the middle of the block and that's what, and that's what.
The only issue I had was the guy that's across the street and the postal department tells you, no, it's got if you live on the west side of the street and the post office tells you, no, you have to only put it on the east side because of the route. So now you're putting it across the street on your neighbors, right? I just think that neighbor should have some say in determining where it goes on his property. It's not even benefiting him. Plus, I mean, you got snow issues there then and.
Put you back to where federal government. Also. What are you gonna do because somebody's right to sue the city, I'm against putting suit. Something can do.
But he's not saying that he's not gonna let him put it there.
Right.
Determining where's the best spot.
Where on that, where on that hundred feet to put it?
He doesn't get to tell him, no, you don't get to put it here, we're not saying that at all.
Yeah.
All we're saying is, those two homeowners decide with some say from the guy that's getting the mailbox on his property that's not his mailbox, he should be able to help determine where's this least encumbrance to me. Cuz it's on my side, I have to shovel around, I have to mow, I have to lose the parking spot, I have to, I have to.
And.
And I don't disagree with that.
The best part of that is you take a couple of these lots in town here where these homeowners are very, very manicured on their lawn. They irrigate, they mow, they trim, it's, it's perfect, it's, it's just a perfect lawn. And then all of a sudden the post office says, yeah, you just put it over there. And then you drive up and you start digging a hole in this guy's front yard. Yes, it's the boulevard and yes, it's right next to the curb and, and yes, you got the permit of the, of the uh, post office. But instead of parking it right in the middle of that man's house or that person's house, why don't we move it over here, out of the way? You know, there's, there's a nice spot just.
It's not right in front of his picture window, baby.
Correct, and, and that's, that's part of what we're trying to clear up and clean up and, and just get, because right now, if we could, the best thing would be to get the postal service to put in these boxes, that whole ten, twelve boxes. So it's like one stop for the post deliverer and then it's one spot where everybody goes to get their mail.
And ninety-nine out of a hundred, Todd, you're never gonna get a complaint. They're gonna walk across and top, talk to the neighbor and they're gonna figure it out without a problem.
So the post office isn't interested in the multi-boxes, paying for them, putting them in. So I guess we just need to, I feel we do need something. Um, if it's all right with the mayor and the council, I'd like to take this uh, when Amanda gets back and sit down and rewrite that one paragraph and bring it back to your next.
Move the table, the mailbox.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so you guys were talking about consent forms and with Ryan here, I just wanted to ask, so what happens when the neighbor just goes ahead and puts it on his neighbor across the street's property and does not involve the city? And if I'm the one that's having to enforce this, what do I do then? Like, what are, what are the teeth that the city has that says you needed to come to us and do X, Y, Z and now you've broken the rules and this is your punishment?
Right now, there's nothing in place.
Okay.
The land, from the mailbox owner, from, from the city to do anything. Um, that's why you need to have something and then there is a, in the ordinance that you guys did have, you did add a, a penalty provision of if you, you gotta move it. If you don't do it, it's a penalty, whatever amount you want, that gives you the teeth, some type of fine to do it, that's the only way you can do it, it's no different than telling people they need to mow their lawn if you don't, you have an ordinance for that, same thing, just set it up.
And on that fine, it said, originally it said not to exceed a thousand dollars. Well, it's been switched now to say, first offense is two fifty, second and after offenses will be five hundred and then not to exceed a thousand in the end. Of, of one, two and three wouldn't go over a thousand. So we were gonna change that in the dollar amount for the, for the penalty.
Okay, any other discussion?
So if the post office can tell you where to put it, are they gonna tell you how to build a base and everything for your?
Yes, in that, in that packet, if you, if you uh, look, there is uh, on page, what is page two of the ordinance, it shows diagrams, we included part of the post office's wording and their diagram of how this is supposed to be installed. And uh, there are some boulevards that have buried cables, either fiber, electric, gas, they're buried in the boulevard. If it's a problem to dig the, the post in, we were trying to figure out a remedy to uh, put a concrete block on the top and then fasten the box to that concrete block.
Like, these streets that have no boulevard, just sidewalk there. So now.
If, if it's.
To block that sidewalk where it's not accessible no more.
Take Sixth Avenue, for example, there's, there's quite a few boxes along there.
Exactly.
They make a metal base that you would hammer drill into the cement sidewalk. Stick your post in, bolt that in and then your, your box would be mounted to that post.
And there's all kinds of parameters, it's gotta break off at a certain speed, it can't wanna be so many, it's gotta be in between minimum inches and maximum inches like.
Yeah, it's all.
Eight, forty-two or something, it can't.
Yep.
Forty-one.
Forty-one and forty-five and six to eight inches from the curb. And if it is digable, it has to be two feet in the ground and a four by four.
But, you know, just saying that, Todd, that's exactly why we need an ordinance for the simple reason that we don't know what's buried in all the boulevards and that's, requires a one call.
One of our uh, commission members, their renter was going to put one in and had this same picture and was gonna start digging in the boulevard and they did the one call and they said, you can't dig anywhere in this boulevard, period. Because there's power and fiber and gas in this bou- right in that area, so they said, no dig. So then they asked, and that's where we came up with this, pour a concrete base and then.
Yeah.
Attach, cuz in that neighborhood, there is no sidewalk, period.
Right.
So they'd have to pour a base and then.
So there is, there's a good reason for an ordinance, for many, for many reasons, but so, well.
For the question.
We've, we've got a motion in a second on the table. Uh, all in favor of, of tabling this till a later date?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have unless you guys have some questions or? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
P and Z Administrator Report.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and Council, I hope that you can hear me okay. Um, we still have building permits coming in, as you can see, the list is a little bit shorter. Um, it does include the new nursing home, which is a three to four-year project at forty-seven million. Um, and then the other slightly bigger one is a, a new shop out on the Leaf property. The other ones are um, just for people's personal use, uh, new driveways, a smaller deck additions, et cetera. Um, we did have the demo permit that goes along with the hospital and then um, numerous special event mobile food permits. Um, those are the ten-dollar permit up to seven calendar days for the people that have uh, food trucks in town. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Everybody looked over the permits? If so, can I get a motion to approve them, all in one? Okay, Chad made motion, is your second?
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, we still have to uh, approve the special event stuff, right?
No, that should be all in with one motion for the whole list, I, is usually how we do it unless you guys wanna do them separately.
The special event liquor license, they're farther down the agenda.
Okay.
They're like, other eight items.
All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir, I'm just uh, I'll be here for the rest of the meeting, I'll just be on mute, so if you guys need me.
Okay, thank you. E D C.
Hi Steve. Hello there. I think everybody has the paperwork and the summary I sent out, so um, I'd just be happy to answer any questions on all of them and I'll just kinda add a couple little things on there. Um, gonna be asking for a little bit of money tonight to be spent, but on the other hand, uh, it's a good thing we have uh, four or five businesses that are looking to either upgrade, uh, expand or start up in town, so uh, that's a good thing, that's uh, what the purpose of the fund is, so. Um, I'll just start with the first one, it's Wild Isla. I assume you maybe had a chance to look through that a little bit and we just, I just summarized some of the things we talked about there. Uh, these are exactly the same terms that we use for Joel Dennis uh, when he was uh, applied, I believe, two months ago. And uh, by the way, he was successful in getting the Horizon Grant and that's kind of the purpose of this, is to get her enough funds so she can apply for an Horizon Grant from the county. Uh, we're trying to use that as much as possible for additional funds or applications and as long as the county has uh, money available that they're doing in this round of, of uh, dispensing some money around the county, we're gonna use that as much as possible, so we're kinda suggesting anybody that comes to us that they uh, that they do that first of all. Um, but obviously some of them need money to match because it's a match on, on those Horizon Grants, so. Uh, the amount's only up to uh, ten thousand dollars on those grants, so uh, in a lot of cases, we need to make sure they have enough funds um, to make that match, so. Um, if you, would you like me to run through all of them or you wanna do these one at a time?
Let's do them one at a time, Steve.
Okay.
So we know, you know, get a better idea.
Okay, I didn't have too much to add there, uh, th- this girl or this couple, uh, you know, basically they're in the event planning business and uh, they do a lot of things that uh, you know, are for events, weddings. You know, are for events, weddings, uh. Aniversaries, birthdays, whatever. Uh, I guess you just don't get a quart of ice cream for your kid anymore for the birthday. They're more elaborate than that and. And uh, so there's a lot of different things that she uses for different props and different kinds of things, so. Uh, as I've noted there, it's a home-based business at this time, but she would like to have a storefront, which would. You know, be for like party city type store, so other additional things would be available. Plus it would give her workspace uh, operating out of her home right now, so. Any questions there? I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody got any questions for on this?
So they currently, this is a home-based business with the intention of trying to get a storefront someday. Is that what this particular one is?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the question?
This is a home-based business right now that's gonna be pursuing to get a storefront eventually. That right, and like party planning, stuff like that?
Yep.
Motion to approve the recommendation of EDC.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and seconded by George. Uh. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the second one is uh, Truck and Fresh Produce. They are in the old Ace Hardware Building and trying to get up and up and running there. Um. Probably three months ago, you approved a grant there for a down payment for the building and uh. He has obviously other things that he needs to do to get that building up and going. Um, we did make it clear that. We're not a revolving bank or anything and, you know, applications can only come to us every two years. But this is very close to the time that he did that, and it uh, our suggestion that uh. We go another ten thousand dollars with him under the same terms. So he has funds to apply for the Horizon Grant again. And uh, we're hoping that can get this request settled. Um, the amount. It would come to forty thousand dollars is similar to other ones that we've used where they have real estate attached to their business, so. Um. That was our suggestion to uh, try to get them up and going and open there, so. So. I guess I'm not sure how we should do that. It's a separate application or just if we could have an amendment to that last one, but either way uh. We're looking to ask for an additional ten thousand dollars on that.
Well, in order to keep it. Where we're within that, you can only apply once every two years. I think it should be amended, Steve. And I don't see a problem with that, but. If everybody's in agreement to that.
What did we do on the last go around? Was this an interest buydown or what did we approve on the last one? I'm s- I'm sorry. What, here, I can speak louder. What did we do for this one last time on the original? Was this an interest buydown or what was the grant we gave? And we already, you know, on the original amount for this particular one?
So it's done as, it's done as like a, a grant with a stipulation clause. So like they have to be, have to stay in operation for, I believe we did five years.
Yep.
That which is how we've done most of them.
And it is a pool grant, right?
Yes.
Have, have we ever had any recourse on any, Steve?
He's already got thirty thousand. He's already got thirty thousand.
He's already gotten thirty thousand dollars and he's already purchased the building. He's just like everybody else who started a business, you run into additional expenses. You know. Ordinarily, we would not. You know. He comes in every other month, you know, that's what we're trying to avoid, but this is just been done within the last three months and.
And and ten thousand is additional food.
Well, basically, he's asking, he was asking for another thirty thousand dollars. We're normally asking to expand ten and we're asking him to apply for the Horizon Grant, so. You know.
What's he, what's he looking for?
Uh, cooler. And they do in the building, you look in there, it's, it's a work in progress.
Wasn't this one, there was a stipulation that they had to be up and going by the first of June, or was that some other one?
That was the one.
That was the one.
No.
Last year.
It was June of this year that he was supposed to be up.
Yeah.
Yo.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely done, not even an option to come and ask. And this ten thousand, from how I read it, is what he's gonna be able to utilize as his match to that Horizon Grant to get. An additional ten thousand from the county. So it's to get some of that money back in too. So I'd recommend amending that initial. Request to encompass this additional ten thousand request. By the way, we did that was successful. Joel Dennis did get. We had enough money to make that match, so. That, that should work as long as the county puts money in the bank.
I'll second.
Okay. Did you get that, George second?
I do have one question, so. Are we gonna, obviously, the terms won't change because I'll have to redo the promissory note. Um. Do you want me to do it effective as of now, like from September first? Okay, 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 thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. Here's what you do, Steve. I know.
Okay, the next one, we have detailing. The George has all been missed and uh. Out of scenes from. Anything, and we have uh, one other one that's gonna be that way on our account on our committee, but. Uh. I just kind of list the things there. Uh, he was already successful. Or giving fifty-eight money there. It's uh. This is, like I said, very similar to the other one where we had uh, real estate attached. And a business, so. Um, even though our committee or the city probably can't get a first behind the bank, some at least you have a. Building and property that's. To uh. Then that forty thousand dollars with the same term, five years or so. Pay that. Uh, here's. Uh, kind of a couple things I mentioned there, um. If we have businesses that are already in town that want to use infirmities. Plus uh, obviously. Vehicles are important to a lot of people, so uh. Non-compete type business that uh, should be busy.
Okay, any further discussion? Can I get a motion? Uh, to approve or disapprove?
And you guys are working, well, they're working towards getting a brick and mortar, right? But not, you don't have it yet.
Currently, we are renting the shop behind Thriveant, but we have a purchase agreement in place for the Gravity Oilfield Service Building next door to Napa. If all this goes through, we will, we would close next week.
Motion to approve EDC recommendation on GNS.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries.
That's a. For a Horizon Grant and. He is adding a new service and battery, controls along with selling product. Careful when. Bank loan involved, but by proving the twenty-five thousand dollars. Pay down on the loan plus. The. Battery machine if there are. People to operate that. Products which you have. Online. I've been in business in Stanley for at least five years on Main Street. Well, she had the business on the top of the professional building too for a couple of years, so. Question.
Um, I would move to accept the uh, EDC Committee's approval uh, for the West End Boutique.
I'll second.
George second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Holy Alley. How that's some of the issue that they're there. They. Didn't do an application for community assistance grants. From the county, but. That section of the county. Grant. Uh, pretty much excluded anyway. It's in a nonprofit business or it's not. Only five one C three or something that's just totally. You know, the. So. Um. It should have passed, but the corporation runs. Helps the Holy Alley set up and the corporation has shareholders. Even though they don't make money, they are a nonprofit. They have a leaseholder and they have shareholders, so. They were unsuccessful on that grant. They should be able to go in. On their Horizon Grant and make the application for that, but that is only ten thousand dollars. That kind of. Those is that I already.
Do I understand what I'm looking at here?
That's upgrades.
Just upgrade. They need all, all new scoring system in there and they need a lane maintenance machine. Scoring thing is totally obsolete. That can't be a part of. Whole machine. That I couldn't see too.
Exactly what they want to update.
Yeah, well, they had quite a few other things on their list, but uh, that's. Kind of uh, those are the two critical items and. I guess not too far away, so. Up and whatever. My, my best example of. You know, the situation there in the theater was in the same position. They, these soul shares. Theater was closed. City came up with the money to get a digital system in there. Since that times. Theater is operating. Got people in there all the time. The volunteer system, they have money in the bank that should go for that. Um. You know, if you fix them right. Then you're done. Um. So the Holy Alley may be moving something down the road or the theater down the road, maybe, but both of them are, you know.
Both of these two businesses, I guess I, I might say I haven't had a lot to do with them, but I know. My folks did back when and your folks did, Steve, to keep these things open. There's been a lot of people that continued that tradition. And have put a lot of their own effort, time. Work into these places. Um, I think anything we can do to help. On stuff like this is a benefit. Well, there's, there. Well, yeah, but the original ones, but.
Didn't. Buy that back in and shares reorganized.
Neither one of these two places are money-making uh, businesses. So.
With uh, the limitation of what we have at our disposal right now for winter events and all the bowling alley and the theater. Both get pretty busy in the wintertime and there's. Not a lot else unless you really like snowmobiling to do out here when it gets cold. Being that said, I will move to approve. The committee's recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion. And a second by Randy. To approve that sixty thousand dollar funding. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Well, there's things, we can have a couple more. Business attending, which is the news, uh. Just kind of works. Yeah, a couple things I want to bring up, and I'm not familiar with what the council might be on that. I happen to know it in the paper that probably had a. Access to state fund for blighted buildings, but I don't. There's a discussion here, but I thought I would. Get our committee to at least research and see what's possible there, so the penalty that's already been backed down.
For removing what? For removing what?
Dangerous building. Side of buildings.
Yep.
So. If we can act as state fund for that all the better. The other thing is, let's see, I noticed that Service Basin got some additional money for. They, they administer what is called a merit. Program and it's put somebody in your community. Work on either city council business or just city business or. Chamber of Commerce business, so I know Newtown uses that. Yeah, I don't know what the terms of it are, and I'm sure it's a cost sharing issue. And uh, we could really use somebody like that in our community. It's a little less than a. Such developer, which we could also use, but uh, it would be helpful. Some of the things that the council needs to be a part of, some of the things that they. Need to be a part of, so. Um, we're, they searched that and did make an inquiry on that, so. I'd be coming back to you.
Okay. It's a great idea.
After the blighted buildings, nothing's in the works or nobody's thinking anything there.
I think it's probably.
Amanda would be the one to answer that.
Amanda, did you hear that question from Steve?
I heard part of it, but I not able to hear very well with him.
He's wondering about our, our. What they call blighted buildings in town, the. You know, like the Schmee's property, for instance.
Mm-hmm.
The state, there's state money out there to help with the removal of them.
I believe so, but I think there are certain qualifications, and I don't know if the city can apply or if it has to be just the homeowners.
And I think that's, that's what Steve was recommending to us is to check into.
And I think that's, that's what Steve was recommending to us is to check into it and see what's out there and if there is something available to us. To capitalize on it if possible.
Absolutely.
Steve said he'd get with you.
That sounds great. Thank you, Steve.
Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, question, the last one for the bowling alley, that one is considered as a grant? No stipulations, just a grant. The five year, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, next one on the agenda, Lee Swenson.
Hi. Uh, I want to talk about our alley uh between uh. Third Avenue South over here and Fourth Avenue South. It's between uh. Prairie Ford here and the Lutheran Church just right over here. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Well, in the mid to late eighties, that's just a guess. Uh, all the homeowners on the block paid for a, to pave the alley with the city's agreement that uh. They're to maintain it as such. It all went well until about twenty ten. I'm just guessing that this is when they did the water line replacement on Main Street. Does anybody know the year of that?
It would have been roughly that time.
Yeah, that's what I think. Anyway, it closed off Main Street and then they had a water lane uh main break over by the grade school on First Street. Well, both streets were shut down. Well, people would come up north up here and they'd see the alleys were open, so they of course take the alley shortcut, right? When they get down the Fifth Avenue down here, well, the alley quits. Well, the streets are closed off. So they gotta rumble their way back again. And that all the heavy equipment, trucks, semis, you name it, everybody was taking that. Of course, they had to do it twice. And it just wrecked the alley. And uh to make matters worse, they had the water line uh, a temporary water line going through the alley. And they had gravel, you know, piled up to uh protect it. Well, the contractor went through and he just spread the gravel over through the alley. And in his defense, it did look like a gravel alley. He, that's what he thought it was because of all this heavy equipment, you know, trucks, you know, loaded. Uh dump trucks, you name it, went over there. All the gravel was falling off, you know, so it did look like a gravel alley. Anyway, I talked to the city about it and they brought the sweets, the street sweeper over to sweep it off. But that only got the loose stuff. I mean, gravel's got clay in it. So I mean, the stuff that packed down wouldn't come up and. The city was too busy. They were overwhelmed with all these projects. I understand that. But uh we wanted them to scrape it off, but they didn't have time to do it, so uh Kim Holicum and I basically scraped it off by uh what was left. With shovel and wheelbarrows, and that was a lot of work. Now, we had all these holes. And they didn't have time to fix them, so I volunteered to fix them. And so I clean them all out and the city gave me the patch material in these bags, asphalt patch, and it worked very good. And so I got it all fixed up pretty good and it stayed for quite a few years that way. But uh just in recent years now, uh instead of patching the holes the way they should be doing it. I believe I consider they should be doing it. They want to use this uh ground up asphalt, recycled asphalt.
Right.
Well, that's just all loose stuff. It doesn't pack, at least the stuff they dumped in our alley doesn't. It just. Bounces out, getting in the hole keeps getting bigger. And uh. Uh, they hallowed to the north of me at that time. You know, behind Prairie Ford and BNC at that same time of this, that got wrecked too. Now, they ended up repaving that. And uh to me, they should have repaved that, this other uh stretch we got there too. But uh I, I had already patched it, so I suppose they figured they, they didn't need to do it, I guess, but nothing lasts forever. I mean, the damage was done. I mean, the holes. You know, my, my patch job lasted for quite a few years, but it, you know, it doesn't last forever. But I say in recent years, they've tried this uh ground up asphalt and it hasn't worked. And uh.
When was that originally put in, Lee? Was that in the eighties?
I believe the eighties. It was there when I moved in and so I'm guessing that's when I was mid to late eighties. That's a guess.
Yeah.
You know. But there isn't much traffic. It's just, you know, cars and pickups, you know, usually and a garbage truck. So it stays pretty good. But um anyway, a few weeks ago, I uh left home for the day. We had a paved, paved alley. Came home that evening and now it's gravel. And like I say, that should have been repaved back in twenty ten, you know, after all that damage, but. It's no longer paved out.
Right.
Now it's gravel.
Which is, which is what ninety-eight percent of them are in town.
Yes.
You know.
And I realize you have new, new employees and stuff like that. They probably don't realize that, you know, it's supposed to be paved, but uh. It is what it is.
I guess from my point of view, I mean, it. If it lasted thirty-five, forty years, I mean, you, they did pretty well on having a asphalt alley. Cause you only put two inches in an alley usually, you know. But I, I guess I don't see where it would be the city's responsibility to keep it up, you know.
Well, what's when there was built?
So you say it's gravel now, did they blade up all the asphalt, all that off and just.
No, they just dumped gravel on top. They just dumped the gravel on top of our pavement.
So the pavement's still there.
The pavement's still there, yeah, underneath the gravel.
So will you be kind enough to allow us a hot minute to have our public works, go take a look at it and see exactly what we got?
Sure.
How much gravel's there? What is there? If we can clean it up, get back to what the pavement that is there? And then we do, we are using cold mix now. That we've probably used close to sixty ton in town already this year and fixing those exact things like your.
That's what it needs. That's what it needs, yeah.
And if that's feasible, we'd be, we'd be happy to put the cold mix in there.
That's, yeah.
Lee is good versus brand new, but patch it up.
Yeah.
Lee, is that asphalt under there pretty good shape or?
Well, for the most part, yeah. There's, you know, other than that, all that heavy equipment banging over.
Usually when you have a heavy stuff driving over it, I mean, it absolutely destroys it if it's older anyway and brittle.
But it, it's just the holes. If they just patch the holes, like I say, with this cold mix you're talking about.
Yeah.
Like I.
I mean, and you'll see it around town, the nice shiny new black stuff that's fixing. Or like the, the alley gutters where the asphalt's broke out next to the cement, they patched it with that. It's, that's what it's designed for is.
Yeah, well, that's what our alley needs, is what I'm getting at.
If that's feasible to you, I think the Public Works Group can get together with the Public Works Team here at the city and.
Okay.
Um do some work on it and see if, see if we can find that common ground again.
Yeah, it's just patch the holes. That's all I'm here to ask, is patch the holes with the right, right stuff.
I think we can, I think we can work with that.
Like I say, I'm, I'm uh, I'm driving in mud now when it rains. Not used to that.
Yeah, so we can, we can address it and take a look at it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, moving on, bros.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Our packet should be um in your handouts already. We can run through things here. Country Estates Water. Um, we've been trying to get the contractor to come back and scarify that thing, um but I've been playing tag with them and just haven't got it accomplished.
No, I, I just, I guess from my point of view, I think we just tell them to go pound sand basically and we pay them and be done with them. What do you think? I mean, we, we both live on that road. That's why I'm asking him. I realize you're getting nowhere with these guys.
Yep.
And. We're just pounding our head up against them.
I think that'd be the easiest.
We'll fix it ourselves.
Some will. Uh with Dion and we've been trying to for three months on this one, so I'd recommend that we pay the final. Pay estimate for the Country Estates Water and. Ask Dave for him and his crew to go out and blade that road up and.
It's not just the final pay estimate though, it's also the uh. What you're holding for um.
For the retainage.
Retainage.
Yeah, we had it uh when we brought you the final payout last time. It's, it, it does include that, so.
Okay.
We just didn't process it until.
All right.
You guys are okay.
All right.
So questions, sorry. So that was for like thirty-three thousand. I don't remember the exact figure. So we already issued the check because obviously when the motion was made. Is that, you know, we'd, but we'd hold the check until obviously the work was completed to satisfaction. Okay.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, there, there's no additional monies that are, are.
So that was the final payment, then that, okay.
Get a motion on it. You made the motion.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed.
Uh, second one, Fifth Street Southeast Reconstruction. Crow River's been out there. They started on the twenty-ninth of July. They've already got the sanitary sewer main and the manholes in. Uh, they just have the services left to, to run in. Along there, so they uh, this crew moves. They do pretty well. Test results have been coming back very good on their compaction. We do have it set up for homeowner progress meetings uh every other Tuesday morning at nine AM in our office. The next one would be August twentieth. Any, anyone that's listening, um you're welcome to show up for those. Uh, they are, they haven't been here this week. They're over paving in Tioga. Yeah, but they'll be back late this week or, or early next week. And they were talking about getting a couple of guys over here to start working on those sanitary sewer services. So a couple of days downtime, but they're not gone at all, so. If you, if you drive through that construction zone, you will see there are a number of boulevard trees with pink X's on them at the bottom. And if you look at each one of those, um there's either a water service or a sewer service. Basically running right underneath the tree, or we've got ones that are sitting so close to the curb that they've got exposed roots. This, this report says that the homeowners have been contacted. They have not been yet. We are in the process of sending them. Or putting a uh, a letter on their door and then we'll be visiting with them, but we wanted to make you guys aware that. You know, trees are a big deal and that you may end up getting a phone call as we're trying to work with this. They're gonna do what they can to save the trees that they can, um.
But there's some. You might want to recommend to the people that. On some of them, you're definitely gonna lose that tree.
Yep.
And then it'll be on them to remove the tree and the stump and all of that. Right now would be the time to remove those trees.
Problem is when it's on boulevard, it's not, it doesn't fall, it falls thus. You removed everyone off.
No, it doesn't. No.
No, if there's a tree on a boulevard, it is the property owners to maintain. Well, there was those grants that we applied for though. It's like when we had some of them removed, we actually applied for a grant for those.
Well, that's what Marley.
During, during the project.
Right.
And that's what we're saying right now.
That's what you're saying.
If we don't do it now.
No, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
I, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I thought you meant during the pro, for the project and it's like, uh, that's not what we did up there.
No, 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 no. What, the contractor would take the tree out now and then it's part of the project and then we're okay.
Power on the same page.
Yeah.
Moving along.
The.
By that time, it wasn't my hearing age. It was the problem. There was no understanding, Chad.
The uh, yeah, the fear would be is if we just trim some of the roots, there's some big ones there. And the tree might look like it's surviving, but it could easily kill half of the tree or something and that's. They're best off letting it go now, but sometimes it's, it's hard to quit hugging them because they are, they are nice to have for the shade. Fifth Street Southeast Commercial Repair, um that's our drain tile and paving job down south.
Back up, you're gonna do the pay application?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We had a pay application for what Crow River's got complete so far in your packet. We need a motion to make that payment.
Motion to.
Can I, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, motion uh by George, second by Randy uh to approve the pay request. Alin, please.
Kirk.
Bye.
Jesse.
Yep.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that and I apologize for jumping ahead. Fifth Street Construction, uh we're gonna have our pre-construction meeting on August twenty-eighth. At two PM at our office and it sounds like they'll be in possibly the, the week after that to start on that project and they'll get that knocked out in September. So we will go into winter with that one complete, so that's a success. That's a win for us. We'll get that and cleaned up as we go into, into spring. Multi-community chip seal, there's no action required there. Uh, that's an update. Multi-community chip seal, uh. We are working with Burke County and then a number of small, uh smaller communities in the area to do a chip seal project for next year. And we have in here a proposal for you for your part of that group plan. What we. Would be looking for then is approval to, to move forward with getting your portion of those plans put together and incorporated into it. We have a, a draft joint powers agreement that should have been provided. Was that provided too? Okay, so Burke County is looking at it. They're going to take, they'll be the lead agency for this, which means. They'll, they will be the ones that will administer the project, so they have a little bit more work to do in it. What will end up happening for this joint project. Your quantities, when they happen, will be brought to you. Council will make a, a, a motion to approve them. And you guys will be uh approving it and then reimbursing Burke County. Burke County will make the payment so that we get it all covered. To make all of that work and keep the attorneys happy, we are, we have a joint powers agreement that we've used previously. That's over in the hands of Burke County's attorney right now. Once it's done, then we'll bring it to you for that. Make sure we're good to go.
So is it at that time, then we establish the district or? Is it, it's gonna need to be special?
Yes, we would, we can establish the, the district um at any point prior to advertising and bidding, I believe. So that we establish the district and then we'll have.
Prior to.
Yeah, we establish prior to and then we come back and do actual costs later.
So I mean, if you guys wanted to, you could do the motion tonight or I could contact bond council. Have them prepare up resolution for the next meeting, I guess, depending on how the council wants to handle it. Either way, we're still gonna have to do that resolution to create the district. So.
Well, yes, initially what we gotta do is tell them to go ahead and design it. Pro, approve that chip seal design area so that we know what we're dealing with. I'd rather do that prior than creating a district because you can't create a district until you know exactly what you're doing. So. I'd rather do that prior than creating the district because you can't create a district until you know exactly what you're doing. So.
I don't think we need anything further on that, really.
No, it's just to, if you guys tell us to go ahead, then we'll go ahead.
Need a motion to approve.
The proposal for.
Okay, yeah. Okay, there's motion. Is there a second?
Who motion, sorry?
Jess.
Thank you.
Motion in the second on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, motion carries.
John Ryan Edition. Last month, we brought you the estimates for the two areas, one commercial and one residential. We have the uh, task orders in front of you to put those two sets of plans together. So that uh, those, and we're doing it as two separate projects because of the funding mechanism we're going to use. Where the city is taking care of uh, a larger portion of the residential, and we're special assessing on the. Commercial. So those will need districts created as well.
Then there's a. District two and three out there. That we need to know on who's paid specials and who hasn't ever. But that'll have to be, that'll have to be factored in.
It will, yes.
Yeah, I was making sure I have it.
I don't know if you're aware that can, but there's, there's three special assessment districts out there. One has, one is um. Contributed to it. Two and three has not contributed anything towards the original special assessment, so.
We definitely need to, I mean, and that's got. The chip seal's gonna cover all of them, but. The initial work that we're gonna do to load roads.
Yeah, we don't have, do we have the chip seal in the, in there for John Ryan? No, we're.
Okay, well, I think that's something that we'll, we'll need to add in there anyway, but that's later anyway, so.
Yeah, and. The, the, the chip seal pr- project, I think we're gonna end up doing multiple, multiple years. For instance, uh, I was up in Bowbells yesterday and looking at theirs. We're gonna do some, we have to do some paving projects up there this year. And then there'll be a uh. Version two point oh chip seal.
Not the worst thing in the world anyway to have it chipped two, three years after it's.
Exactly. If we have anything that moves, we know what, we can fix it.
Yeah. So I guess I need a motion right now to approve um. Uh, the task order for them. For John, or not the task order, basically to approve the engineering for. John Ryan Edition.
Uh, you're right, you need to approve the thousand thirty-one and two for.
Right, okay, yeah.
Second.
Okay, a- all in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, lead service line replacement program. Uh, there was a. Uh, seminar about how that. Program is going to work and um. The, the way the feds have it set up and running through the, the health department. Uh, loans are, are covered with a sixty-six percent forgiveness on them. Interest is normally at two and a half percent, but the loans on this project. It are at a half a percent for disadvantaged communities, which Stanley is one of them. Private citizens are not allowed to. Work directly with the grant program. And so the. The state is encouraging communities to set up a project whereby they take the lead. On doing lead line replacements and then work with the private homeowner to reimburse. To their portion of it, if you opt to do it as opposed to the city covering it all. Um, just.
The state is actually gonna cover that.
Sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six percent they'll cover. Uh, just as an example, I, I did this. I've got an old house that I was fixing up. Ran into a lead water line, and the way that one was set up. The state kicked in some, the city kicked in some, and what they ended up. Uh, giving to me as my bill was ten percent of the project. And so I was able to work with the city to get on the list. They went through and they were doing a hundred of them. And they just, they picked off the top one hundred, got them done, and then I ended up paying the contractor. The ten percent, and the city took care of paying them the ninety, and then got the reimbursement from the state. It's a lot of paperwork to get it done, but it is a program that gets it done affordably for the citizens.
How many do we have total?
We had a, well, about a half a dozen.
So there's probably forty.
Forty, fifty, something like that. So out of the little under one thousand two hundred water services we had. We had about three hundred and fifty-ish that responded. Of those, about fifteen-ish showed lead lines. Many other ones showed unknown. And the hard part is the oldest section of town was where we kinda got the least responses. And so there are blocks where every response we did get came back lead, but we only got three houses on that block that responded.
I, I could take you to three of those blocks where I can almost guarantee you there's lead lines.
So it gives us a pretty good idea of where they are. Um, but there could be some blocks that are hiding, cuz there's some areas that we have three blocks straight. We didn't get a single response on. Kind of a crap shoot, carried out to two decimal points. When we do these things, it's, it's tough. You get the best. Guesses you can, and then you find out what you really got. And I, I guess there, there's one other uh, note in here. The galvanize, anybody that has a galvanized line, that's also included in the program. So they can get those replaced too.
So then we gotta go back through and check them all again, cuz we only asked them to.
We did mark galvanized lines too. Yeah, we're good. We did have the marked down galvanized too. If they came back as galvanized, they did, that was one of the options.
About one of the fifteen though.
No, that's not counting the fifteen. There is.
The fifteen number, we needed to care about the lead and the galvanized, so that's a few hundred.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so, Chad.
It, I'm not sure. I didn't count how many with the galvanized after this seminar. Because my question that I wasn't really able to get a clean answer on is what counts as downstream in a water system? Cuz you have water that's coming in from the pumps, you have water then that's coming in from the tower. It's going both ways at different times of day. So in my mind, everything is downstream from the line. So I would think that every galvanized line would be eligible, but I can't get a clean count cuz I don't know exactly what they consider downstream. It's gonna be. That's what I think. Uh, I just, I could go through and count. There's probably, off the top of my head, probably twenty to thirty. I think we've probably got a galvanized. We definitely got more galvanized than we did lead.
And we got thirty-three percent return on.
But.
Four hundred, so.
Well, if you jack all the pressure up to about eighty pounds, we'll find out.
Run all three pumps, let it go.
When does this, when do we have to know what we want?
We're early. We kinda got our, we got our lead line thing in a lot earlier than other communities did. I think the deadline is that they're asking for it to have review before it goes to the federal government, it's like October. So they're not even really at the deadline. A lot of these communities don't even know what they have yet. We, they just, we were the first one that kinda came in that was with our contact who had lead, and he said, let's get it on this before. The money's gone, if you guys wanna do it. Gave you guys a kind of an early option. So long story is, I don't know the exact date. I just know there's a limited fund and we kinda have early access.
So if we, if we do this mathematically, because you guys like formulas, so you take the percentage of the ones. Of the return numbers and figure out how many of them are lead and. Galvanized, and then apply it to two-thirds, let's say, of, of the city water meters.
Cuz we, we could honestly refine it even more, cuz yeah, then how many connections are up in John Ryan that was built? Past when lead was banned, the apartment buildings are after those banned. In total, we probably have six hundred known. If you add in those ones that were built after the years. So we probably have half the system that's known because we either got responses. Or they're large buildings or large developments that were built after the nineteen eighty-seven banning.
So can you bring that number to us in September so that we have an idea of how to proceed with this?
I gotta throw together an estimate of how many lead and galvanized we have based on that.
Surprised if there's fifty to a hundred at the max, but.
I, I would guess we're probably sitting around that fifty number with lead and galvanized. Okay, so our, our action item there will be to come back with a. Charpen our pencils up a little bit on what number we're dealing with. And then uh. The last thing we have on here is Stanley Phase Three Capital Improvement Project. If we wanna move forward with. What's left of the plan set that we had last year. Now we have Phase Two done. If we need to turn that into a plan. Or we just hurry up and wait with that one. It all, that's all dependent on what you wanna do because we're coming up on. Which is supposed to be our good bidding season again.
Yeah, I think. We plan nothing for the rest of the year, but probably put something out this, this fall, late fall or. You know, for spring.
Yep.
That always your best bet, and to be honest, I mean, now we've got a little history that we can fall back on now as well. Let's keep these contracts or these projects smaller. We'll get more bids because that's the shape that the contractors are in right now. Because of lack of help and everything else, um, contractors are. They've got their main crew, and that's what they're working with. And uh. You're seeing it all the way across the board. So we're gonna get our best bids if those projects aren't huge.
Agreed, agreed.
Nobody agreed with me last year.
You, you proved us wrong.
No, it's not about that, but I just think. I, no, I just think it's in the city's best interest. I mean, hell, you can try it both ways, you know, but. But I, I do think you exclude some really good contractors if the project's too big.
Yep.
They're not gonna stick their neck out there because they can't get the help. So.
We can't get them all fixed if we don't keep doing these projects.
That's right. We, we have to keep.
Kick down the road for forty years in some cases, so.
It doesn't mean you can't do the same amount of work that we wanna do. Let's just, we're gonna have to do it in smaller chunks.
We'll do that next year.
Right.
See what them, well, I mean, we have definitely proven as a council that we're not afraid to reject all the kids.
Right.
So I'd make a motion to approve task order one and, one, two, and three for Phase Three set with those eleven blocks.
Sir, second? George, Kate, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all.
You bet. Okay, before we move on, we are gonna take a short intermission. Uh, we'll take a ten-minute break. Oops, sorry, Ryan. All the meeting back in order? And with that, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the adjustment that the City of Stanley Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh. We'll do that right now. Fire Department.
Greetings. So the Fire Department brings a recommendation. Fourth to replace the city's current Unit Three. Which is a nineteen ninety-two. Uh, Freightliner Pumper, or no, Ford Pumper. It, uh. The reasoning is the, it's got a steel tank in it that's rusting out and we're kind of concerned. One of these days we're gonna show up and it's gonna be empty. And the pump in it is obsolete. It's pretty hard to get parts. We had to get some parts for a few years back and it was. It took them quite a while and it was expensive. And it will not pass the pump test anymore. And so our recommendation is to replace it with an Alexis. Pumper, which is, uh. Would be a twenty twenty-five international with a thousand gallon tank. Twelve hundred and fifty gallon a minute pump to match that one. Uh, the price on it is six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, but there is a. Um. Discount if you pay a hundred percent upfront. So that discount's twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So our recommendation is to purchase this truck. And. Pay a hundred percent upfront for the cost savings. We'll now, we'll sell it, probably put it out on bids. It's not worth much, you know, we'll be lucky if we get. Five, ten thousand bucks out of it. Obsolete. I mean, somebody will buy it to wash out their cattle pot or something like that, most likely. It's a ninety-two. Yep. Yep.
Post toll?
Uh, so with the discount.
Has that got the guns on the front?
Uh, no, it ha- that one does not. I think we took that off that one, or is that still on there? Okay. So it, with the discount, we'd be asking for six hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, five eighteen, six fourteen, five eighteen. And, uh. It's a five hundred and fifty day delivery on it. So that puts us, you know, almost two years out on getting it is another reason. We wanna get something. Coming. It's not, not something you can just go out and. Replace real quick if. That one does. Quit on us.
How much money do, Lynn, do we have in the?
So as of the end of July, there was nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-one cents. In the Fire Department Reserve account.
Okay.
So I think that's something that everyone should know because that is what that's for.
Yeah. Um. And as much as the Fire Department is utilized and called in the city, I mean. A great Fire Department, it's very, very active.
We do have a great fire department.
And it's, uh. Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve, uh, purchasing the truck in full in advance for the discount.
Uh, within like ten days of of signing it.
Okay.
Correct, yep. We can pay, I mean, we don't have to pay the hundred percent. Um, so if you, I don't remember what the minimum is. But if you choose to. Yeah, if you pay like fifty percent upfront. You get a thirteen thousand dollar discount, so you can. You know, pay whatever you want. It's just the discount. So unless you're earning, you know, gonna earn more on interest.
But you can pay that into an escrow where even if you pay the entire amount, so you get the full benefit of that. Um. And at that point, you, I mean, you know, you're not gonna get screwed or anything.
Yeah, you're you're locked in at that then, so regardless of. It doesn't. That's what we're signing the contract.
That's the idea of paying for the whole thing.
We're locking it in. So they're they're going out and purchasing all this stuff, you know, their. Their biggest thing is they ha- is the chassis is the holdup. To get this from international, so they go ahead and they pay for that right up front and that's a lot of it right there.
Okay, there's a motion on the table by.
I got a question.
Yep.
And I don't know the financial. Well-being of this company. What if? You pay it and then a year they.
Uh, so they actually. Get a, uh, a bond or what it's some, I believe, on it, yes.
Okay, so there's some protection.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep, they do for the full purchase price.
Whatever we agree to, they bond it.
Yep.
Completely, so if they were to.
Yeah, they get a a hundred percent performance bond will be issued within ten days.
Cover.
Yep, and this, uh, they, the the. The play, the sales. Place is out of Great Falls, Minnesota, but the truck is actually built in Alexis, Illinois. They've been around for quite a while and that place that they've had good luck with them, so. Okay.
And just so you know, we do have a rural truck on order from the same.
Same thing, we just replicated it.
Rural Department opted to go the same way, I believe, for the savings. You're not gonna make that money in five hundred days in interest.
Right.
That savings.
Percent, there's six hundred thousand, five percent is thirty thousand a year, fifty thousand in two years.
Is that what your money's earning right now? Where it is, that's, yeah.
How is there is nothing, it sits in a. Fine idol. Our fire reserve account, that's not invested anywhere, right? So.
No, it needs to be accessible, right?
Yeah. Sky has to be liquid.
Right.
All second and motion. Okay, there's motion in a second. Any further discussion? Lynn, you, please.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no needs, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
Do you want to get that paper to Lynn?
Yep.
So that she can. Take care of what she needs to do right away so we can carry it.
Hey, moving on, Montreal County Emergency Management Plan. This has kind of been something of discussion. Uh, we had a. A local. Uh, mo- uh, motorhome park. Talked to us about this, um. You know. It is important that we have a shelter. For people in the event of a storm. And, um. We got a response back from. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if everybody's read that. Is that in here?
Yeah.
From Montreal County, um. And I guess. They can respond back however they want, I guess, on something like that.
And it'll be a dinner lawyer, basically says that it's not Montreal County's problem, it's the City of Stanley and it's.
Very just. Basically what they said in their letter. Um.
That was signed by Warren Boger.
Any discussion on that?
If I remember correctly, did, did they not come in and pitch to us to adopt their program? May- maybe I'm wrong, but.
My understanding was we had an agreement with the county, but, um. Because they are the emergency management, um. But. I know this, I know we have to have something in place. Uh, for a policy. Of where we're gonna, uh, put these people up. Be at the school or some building that's suitable for it. And I mean, it's not just every building suitable for it, so. Um. I know the old bank building used to. Um. That might be a possibility that we can get a hold of Skip and and make arrangements there. Uh. He he might.
No, he had already.
He has declined it?
Yes. That was the last report we got. About the SS.
I think so that's all we're trying.
Well, um. Like the Memorial Building isn't, neither is the.
Where?
Courthouse, County Courthouse, so.
County buildings.
No.
Accessible as storm shelter according to.
Right. They.
Leaves us with churches and schools that they can.
Yeah, whether or not the churches would. You know.
Do we need to put together our own? Hazard mitigation plan then?
Well, I see no other way.
I guess I would recommend that the mayor appoints a three-person committee to. Dig into this a little bit and see what we have to do. We're not gonna solve it tonight.
We can do that. But it it was necessary to bring it to the city council because.
No.
Um. It it is a problem that we gotta face, and I mean, we gotta, we're gonna have to find a solution to this problem. So. I can do that. I'll give it some thought. We'll pick three people and, um. We can do that. So without. Motion or anything, will this move on? Uh. Park District Loan Request.
So you will see there's their pay request in there. Um, so what their. Final pay request, because they're also including the retainage once they come back to finish up what they need to do. Would be four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. You'll see I included the spreadsheet, um. If you figured that in, that would actually put them over the three million. What was remaining before this request would have been two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. And I did, I did tell Cassie that, that obviously. There wasn't as much remaining as what they were, what she was requesting.
So essentially they're right at two hundred thousand, two hundred.
Six.
Thirteen thousand dollars short, then.
Twenty-sixty.
Yeah.
So what exactly are they short?
Two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Okay.
They told him to start his project.
He was wondering if they knew that when they started this project that they were gonna be short.
We didn't.
We didn't, no, we. We offered them the loan at their request of three million dollars.
Yeah.
With zero interest for thirty years.
So that's what they got then with three million?
Yep, and right now what they have left in their account is. Yep, and right now what they have left in their account is that.
So two twelve eight ninety-five twenty would be what would be remaining they can request, but they would be short the two sixteen eight four thirty-nine thirty-one.
See, I mean, the most that we can approve tonight is the.
Two twelve.
The two twelve.
And that's to finish off the.
The swimming.
The pool.
Yep, and that's gonna leave them two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars short in satisfying their debt with Roar's Construction.
And I mean, I guess when I talked to Cassie, I mean, I don't know if they still got money in their pool account that they created, I guess I didn't have that discussion with her. I just told her that obviously they probably weren't gonna get approved for the full request she submitted.
Right, well, and there is, there was some discussion, I mean, that I've had with them about, uh, whether or not they were ready to sign off on, or, you know, write, pay that whole amount off, because uh, there were things pending there uh, on their final approval, so.
There, there are checklists as well.
Plus, I mean, I don't see anything on here about liquidated damages, and they have a lot of liquidated damages out there because they were a year over on their project, basically. So whether or not that comes off that amount, uh, we would have to do some more uh, or have some more information than just what we have.
Okay, so do we want to table this request and maybe ask for someone to be here at the next meeting?
Yeah, Chris needs to be here and explain, I guess, um, where, where exactly we're at on that, because I do know that uh, there are liquidated damages out there and it's a substantial amount, plus the fact that, um, uh, I don't think they've, uh, get, given them a final walkthrough approval to pay that final pay request, so I, I would be in favor of tabling this until we get more information, and if we have to, we could have a special meeting if, if that's gonna present a huge problem or something.
I, I know at the very least we cannot go over the three million, that's what. That was what's in the.
Well, we can't do it, yeah. Well, I, I need a motion to table.
A motion. Second.
Okay, motion in the second, table this until next meeting. Okay, really. Oh. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries. Resolution ratifying proceedings, District fifty-six, seven, and eight.
Do you see there's two resolutions in front of you, these just kind of summarize everything that's taken place from the time that, uh, they were created till up until this point. The bond council figured it was the best way to just do these resolutions, especially like with fifty-six and fifty-seven, because it changed, you know, from what originally was set up for. So, um, we'll need to do them separately, so the first one would be for fifty-six and fifty-seven.
Move to approve ratifying the re- resolution of District fifty-six and fifty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, motion in the second on the table, uh, all in favor.
We need to, we gotta do real, sorry. Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Okay, hearing no nays, motion carries. Now the resolution for fifty-eight.
Motion to approve resolution re- or the ratification of resolution for District number fifty-eight.
Second.
Okay, motion by Chad, second by George, um.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, uh, motion carries. Okay, moving on, gaming permits.
You got one gaming permit in front of you, it's for the Stanley Park District, it would be for a raffle, a calendar raffle, and a sports pool. So you'll see the raffle would be on March fifteenth, the calendar raffle would be every day in the month of April, and their sports pool would be every Saturday, Sunday, Monday, from September first through February ninth.
Okay.
To approve.
Okay, motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Jesse, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Okay, second quarter gaming funds.
So this is just something that obviously they send to us quarterly for the council to review.
Yep. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll move on, special event liquor license.
So there's one special event liquor license in front of you, it would be the Leader Bar, but this would be for the Wine Walk with the Band of Follow at the Leader. And you should see all of the included slips from all the businesses that will be involved during the Wine Walk or the Grapes and Grain Festival.
Motion to approve the special event liquor license, second.
Okay, motion in the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries.
Sorry, there's, I kinda forgot, cause that one was so big, there's actually one. Four more, sorry. So the leader has one more, which is September fourteenth would be for a wedding reception at the South Complex, the leader, or sorry, the Five Spot has one for wedding reception and dance on September seventh. And then they have a wedding reception and dance on October nineteenth. And the last one would be another wedding reception and dance for November thirtieth, seeing they were South Complex. But, yeah, all three of those were at the South Complex.
Motion to approve the rest of the liquor license requests.
Is that?
Transfers, sorry.
Okay, motion, second by Chad, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the complaint.
Um, does anybody have the judge's report to pass around?
What's that?
Anybody have the, okay, never mind.
Okay, so obviously you have a complaint in front of you, I was not the one that actually took the complaint or did not speak to her, but I know Ada had told me when she come in, she was very upset. Um, I think there was some choice words said, but, so you'll see that her complaint is against Prairie Ford and their constant parking of vehicles obstructing vision, especially leaving BNC Bank. Want me to read the whole thing, or?
No, I don't think yeah, I think we've all read it, but.
Okay.
After reading it, going up there looking, there's a couple of things that kinda come to mind on this. One is, I'm assuming that she'd made a left-hand turn out of BNC, which that itself is not correct procedure when you leave there, you should only be able to turn right out of there. It's not marked that way, it, it should be. Now, with parking on Main Street, Main Street's owned by every person that comes to town for parking, the forty or the seventy-two hour parking thing, I agree with her, that's how the ordinance reads. So seventy-two hours, those vehicles need to move. Now with that said, they can drive around the block and park them right back in the same spot and everything's good. We can't say anything to her about that, or to mad. We can ask them to move them every seventy-two hours to live within our ordinance. We can ask BNC to put up a no left-hand turn out of their drive-through. A few things that we can do, but as Mary so kindly stated, for, since it was Midwest Federal Savings and Loan over there, people were turning left and right out of the drive. How do you would sign up and say right-hand turn only? Left-hand turn, I. Man, I, I, I totally understand Sue's complaint.
I think we talked Prairie Ford, um, basically, and, and tell them that there was a complaint and that we'd appreciate it, you know.
At least leave one spot open so that you can.
Yeah.
Or, or a low profile via. Or, yeah.
Be more mindful of, of people coming out of there.
Work with us, we'll work with you.
Yeah, and I, we have just the person to talk to, to Prairie Ford.
Yep. I don't think we need a motion, I don't think we need formal business.
No, we don't. Okay.
Get it old Stanley and go have that conversation.
Moving on, police report, I see no police involved.
Uh, Kevin told me yesterday that he didn't have anything to report anyways, so.
Okay, Public Works.
Good evening, um, I met with the Public Works Committee over these two issues I have. And one of them is raising the fee for turn-off for delinquent water bill and turn-on from twenty-five dollars each to a hundred each. And why I say a hundred is, a lot of times I send out two people to a house that's a new shut-off, just cause we don't know if we have a disgruntled homeowner coming out, hollering at us that we're gonna turn off water. Well, you get twenty of them a day, we get twenty turn-offs. That's tying up one to two of my people all day long, turn them off and turn them on, and these are a lot of repeat offenders. Going into winter, um, a lot of guys know, you, you bring out that hydro vac or fresh water to clear out a curb stop, we're just giving ourselves another issue of having a bigger problem with, with colder weather. I'm thinking a higher fee, they might pay their bill instead of let it. It's just a lot of them, it's how many of them are repeat, a lot.
I'd say at least probably forty or fifty percent of them are usually repeat offenders, I mean, you know, you get them, you shut your, their water off, they pay, and then two months later, we're sending them another notice that, hey, you're delinquent again.
This twenty-five turn-on, twenty-five turn-off, that fifty bucks is not covering the city's gas. Running around all day doing this.
I agree. So I, I do have one question too along these lines, um, and I've, and I've thought about this a few times now. So how about when they're asking to have, are they coming in at five minutes to five and paying their bill and then wanting it turned on before our hours of five o'clock, or are we making them wait till the next morning to turn it back on?
Most generally, most of them, like if they go do the shut-offs right away in the morning, usually within a few hours, I mean, sometimes even less. Majority of them are calling and paying, so I mean, there's still time within the afternoon for them to go turn them back on. I don't say there's too often, I mean, probably on a few occasions, somebody, because they've literally just got home and then realized their water is shut off.
What's the council's feelings on that? I mean, I don't feel that we should be paying our people overtime to go turn on somebody's water that they chose not to pay the bill for three months. That can wait till eight o'clock the next morning. Have MDU shut you off, or Montreal Williams Electric shut you off, and call them at five o'clock and pay your bill. They're not sending a crew out to turn your power back on till the next day. And if they do, you pay, MDU for sure.
I'd say we give them a timeframe, say they haven't paid by, say, two thirty-three, or two thirty, or two, two thirty. After that, at least till next morning.
And I mean, I guess the only thing is, normally we, we do also have in our policy that it, if, if it's after hours or like on the weekends, it's supposed to be fifty per shut-off or turn-on. So I don't know then if they're.
It was double change.
Yes.
Two hundred and two hundred then, if we follow that same formula on the weekends or after hours.
Okay.
Is, it's a two minimum, or two-hour minimum for a call-out. So we gotta cover those costs.
And I don't, and I don't think you're talking about that one Eric, one where the bill got lost, or they were.
Eight is.
On vacation for.
And that's, that's.
For instance, or whatever.
Eight is really good at weeding through these, like, oh, so-and-so was in the hospital, so-and-so was on vacation. She's really good at it, these are the repeat offenders that are every, every month, and it's tying up a lot of time. I'm thinking by raising it, it's a fifty-dollar water bill, it'd be cheaper to pay it than pay the fine. Yeah. Yeah.
Their water turned on.
But they, they, they can, Randy, they can talk to the City Hall and, and work out an agreement with the City Hall, and, and then this wouldn't apply. I mean, if they have an agreement beforehand with the Auditor's Office or with, uh, you know, the City Hall, they won't necessarily get shut off. But they, but you have to step up and ask.
Guessing you have people come in and occasionally and say, I can't pay this, please don't shut me off, what can we do to make a payment plan, right?
Yes, and so I mean, you know, there are some cases where say, something major happened and they just, they're not able to pay it all, and they'll say, hey, I can make a payment say, this coming Friday, or, you know, next Monday, or, as long as people call and let us know where you, you know, unless it's, the bill is just way too high, then we tell them, you, you're gonna have to attempt to make some sort of payment.
Well, and I.
But otherwise, we work with people, I mean.
I think you should re- really lenient and work with people, you know.
And, and we are, you know, there's just, like he said, you, there is your repeat offenders, and it's like after a while, it's like, how much can you keep giving them a break, because they do it every two, three months, it's just, you know.
And that's because they're allowed to go two months in arrears before they make the payment.
Yeah.
If it was turn-off at, at forty days, that you'd be there every month.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the record, that's an important point, you have to miss two bills before you end up here, so I mean, you'd have some foresight that this has come. You know, yep. Well, it's three months out, or is it the third bill, is that when we shut off, can't remember the.
Are you making a motion then, Chad, um?
I'd make a motion to accept the Public Work Director's recommendation, increase the shut-off and the turn-back on to a hundred dollars each.
It's changing.
Yeah, let's try that and see what happens.
Okay, there's a motion in the second, all in favor, Jesse, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Does that include the call-out? No, we'll just do, just, let's just try it at this and see how it fixes. If it don't, it won't reverse.
Well, that would be in either case, after hours or.
Well, another one I had was, uh, looking at residents in commercial businesses that have a sewer line that requires a lift station. Adding a extra cost to their monthly bill, like two dollars for residents, eight dollars for, uh, commercial. And that's gonna help defer some of the costs when we have to go in and replace the lift station.
Why don't you, uh, base that extra off of usage of water? I mean, there, you have some that are using mega.
Well, I, I did do one example, like the country lift down there. I did a thirteen-month average, and then on the average, that lift station brings in, or that, those people down there that feed to that lift, is four hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons of water a month. And to redo that, retrofit that lift station just cost us seventy-five thousand. So.
Point, exactly.
Yeah, we could look at that. This is just something that we bounced around the other night with the Public Works Committee.
And that's, that's kinda where that number came from. And that's, that's kind of where that number came from, against usage. Essentially, every resident, for the most part, every residential account in town uses. The average bill is like seventy dollars, and that's your minimum water usage, what you pay for whether you use it or not. That's, that's where the two dollars came from, was just against that general usage. The eight dollars came on the commercial side, just simply because they have.
Larger volume.
I don't think, just because somebody's on the line, I guess that's got a lift station, they should pay any more than anyplace else that's on gravity in town, to be honest with you, but that's my.
I guess I disagree, and here's why. My sewer doesn't require seventy-five thousand dollars worth of pumps to be replaced. My sewer flows directly to the lagoon.
That's true, but that's because the city is set up a certain way. If you don't have drainage to the main part of the city sewer, what choice do they have but to have a lift station? And I mean, they're paying the same rate of taxes, you all bet, on the corner, you know.
Probably, but they receive the same street light and the same road plowing and the.
They they do.
All that, so.
So why should the water be different?
Because.
And sewer.
People that live behind a lift station require extra equipment to remove their sewer.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, but that's neither here nor there, I guess. I can see it on the mega users that are in these huge lift stations, and there's hundreds of thousands of gallons going through them. Yeah, it's gonna be seventy thousand dollars to replace those pumps every now and then, I understand that. But.
But you also have to remember, they go there every week to clean them and to check them, it's not just replacing the pump, that requires weekly maintenance. Every single one that we have. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't incur that cost.
And put in gravity to everybody. And you won't incur that cost.
Explain to me how you can flow it up without a pump.
You can't, that's what I'm saying.
So then I guess I would recommend at that point, then when we have to replace these, we'll create a special uh, assessment district and bill it to homeowners at that point. We'll come with something new.
We're gonna table up and run some numbers or. Yep, that's all I had.
Pretty updates.
Yeah, so, um, I tell, I think the, I don't know if it was discussed, um, I think at the last, um, city council meeting, or at least it was, because Fred Evans donated land for the city to to do a park or whatever. And we were getting ready for the, to get it created, a a deed and everything, and we were looking at the emails that were part of the the communications, and there was a requirement as a con- as a condition of the of the the donation by, uh, Fred Evans's business that this, the city plants through, uh, rows of trees on the north part of the of the of the land, uh, for whatever reason. And so like, I, before I dabble, the city's gonna need to, before they agree to this again, this, this, this gift donation, that Ellen get us a a a cost of it, and she did leave this, but she got a, to plant, uh, three trees, or three rows of trees, or maybe four rows. It says in here, the the cost's gonna be a thousand bucks that the city has to to pay as a condition. So I, you just, I think you guys need to look at that, and if you agree to it, then we'll draft the deed and get it all ready. But since it's an additional expense or that the city has to do, I think you guys need to go back and approve that part.
By this new baseball fields. Oh, summer complex.
The bros engine, you guys created a plot, uh, right? You guys created those draft plot for us, so we have, we don't have those here, but you, if you see the plot, you'll see that they created that little area that they 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 donated, so. And I, we don't have the, do we have the 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 diagram of where they were gonna put the trees? Do we have that?
I guess I didn't print that, did you want me to go? So I mean.
Just to the north.
I mean, as we told him, it would, it would go on the the furthest north side of that lot. Cause which, then it would serve as a buffer, obviously. Cause I'm guessing at some point later in the future, I'm guessing they're probably gonna develop that other lot, you know. So, but yeah, so what is in front of you is what I contacted the soil conservation on. And then Tyler, who I spoke with, is what he was suggesting was, you know, a spruce, poplar and maple for the three rows. I, oh, sorry, and I guess one other thing, he did mention to me that they didn't think they could probably get these planted next year, it sounds like they have a lot on their schedule. So it could probably be a couple of years before they'd probably be able to plant them, but.
And for better tree to be, they're asking for eight-foot pine trees to be put back in, because guess who wants it? Nineteen eighty-one, when they established the pine tree addition, the city council agreed to something at that point in time, and now it's everybody's job to deal with this.
Well, never.
I mean, that looked really nice. Long, long time, and then now they started getting disease and dying and.
Never thought of it back then, you know, that you're gonna have those problems with them, but right now, to buy one of those pine trees that's by the inch, you know, so you you're looking at.
And I'm definitely not opposed to planting a few rows of trees out there, I mean, that just makes everything nicer. Makes it nicer for the ball diamond, for the park district. That's.
But the total cost of that was a thousand dollars, you figure?
And so I did this out at the farm through Tyler, up at the soil conservation, and what they ask is that you till the ground, and they'll come in and they'll put fabric down and they'll plant the trees and they make. So for a thousand dollars, you not only get the trees, but they also buy them for you, so.
They, there is no way to really water them there either, you know, so there's no water out there. Figure out, kind of the mercy of Mother Nature to, that they grow.
You can store the old fire truck in the city building and Dave can. But I don't know, I guess I don't have a problem with planting a thousand dollars worth of trees, I mean. Sure. With the advisement of finding something alternative to all evergreen-type trees. Yeah, that's an evergreen. Poplar's not.
Yeah, maple isn't either, so.
Oh, okay.
So you're good with those three then?
Not good with the evergreen, so I just, but the reason for them is the the nice winter protection, windbreak, if you will.
There's nothing saying that we have to replace these, right?
What's that?
There's nothing.
Nothing saying that we have to replace these if they die out. Okay, is there a second?
All second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Ryan?
Nothing.
Hey, council concerns. Kirk.
I'm good.
Jesse.
I'm good.
Ty. Ryan? Randy. George.
I'm good also.
Chad.
I'm good.
Judges' report, has everybody had a chance to look at it, I could, just got it back, so I think they have.
Motion to approve judges' report.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign, Bills. Everybody had a chance to look them over? Any discussion on them?
Pay the Bills.
Okay, there's, motion and a second, pay the Bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign opposed, motion carries. Keep in mind, everybody, there's, again, lots of families in town are hurting, there's been a lot of death and terrible things happening around the area, and uh, keep those people in your prayers. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's almost.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Ryan, for coming.